Hello, good evening and welcome to the platform. I am your host, Brian Marvin K Setola. If you if you're tuned in from Mashigoneh six point one, Niyangane eight point two, Mutura Shangan seven point six, Baye Bridjo no six point one, Arare one oh six point four. In my hometown, Muta Arine five point four, would love to have you as part of this conversation. So please do send through and let us know what's up platform. Oh seven seven two one six eight zero four five oh seven seven two one six eight zero four five. Back into the show, it's important to announce that um as we get close to our thirteenth birthday, Z F M Stereo will be turning thirteen in August. As we get um close to that, there are a lot of changes that are happening in terms of our current affairs programming. You will notice that um the platform, it used to be um held every Monday, has been moved to Wednesday. And uh as the M P will now take his place every Monday from seven thirty to eight thirty. A number of changes that are happening as Z F M Stereo becomes a teenager. My teenager don't know how, I don't know what chinja chinja is. So that is what is um happening with us. We hope that you as our listeners will also be part of our celebration. Our thirteen year um celebrations as they come up. Now back to our show, um human rights issues are issues that are dear to us. When some hear about them, they quickly politicize them and make them appear as if they are political issues. However, human rights issues are deeper than that. And tonight, I am joined in the studio by the Chairperson, the Honorable Chairperson um of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission. To talk about all issues to do with human rights. These are issues that affect us on a day-to-day basis and it's important that we understand um what the Commission does and its role, its function. What the chapter twelve Commission is. And to have that, um the Honorable Chairperson, Honorable Fungai Jesima Jome, has graced us with their presence. Good evening, Honorable and the Honorable Chairperson, and thank you for coming through. We're happy that you could be a part of this conversation.
You're welcome and thank you, Brian, and good evening, listeners.
And what I also.
And uh I think viewers.
Yes, viewers, viewers, this will also be on our YouTube channel.
We should not discriminate. We do human rights, equality for everyone.
Equality for everyone, eh, leaving no one in no place behind, is is uh the Chairperson has pointed out.
Absolutely.
And I'm also also um point out that uh following her appointment, um Honorable Majome, Chairperson Majome, chose to start with Z F M Stereo. She gave us a inaugural interview with the first ones to talk to here, so uh maybe that we are now having this follow-up interview.
Me too, Brian.
Ta ta. Ta ma ta ma ka promesa jia jia, sentinaju, I wrote everything down and tried to going to be checking, giving check.
Fantastic. I I like that.
Da ba.
Seven of the constitution requires that um everyone has a right to make political choices freely. Campaign for or against a political idea, entity, run for office if they want, support uh poli- policies or oppose them with others who are alone. In section three of our constitution uh if uh introduces fundamental values um of for Zimbabwe and one of them is good governance. And interestingly Brian, that good governance is defined as including a multi an I quote a multi-party democratic system of government. So we are in a phase in a uh in our country where it needs to be understood right across the board that political rights are human rights and they are fundamental. They are not dispensable, they must be respected and we have the right to freedom of conscience, people have a right to think the way they think and as long and and exercise their choices freely. So tho those are some of the areas where when we're doing generally well as a country but they are disturbing levels of intolerance for different political views sometimes uh by members. We've we have cases where uh from the ruling party that are reported uh to us uh concerning sometimes interference with the distribution of food aid in the rural areas or agricultural inputs. When the president his excellency has categorically said and keep saying that it rings in our ears, we actually said it here leaving no one and no place behind.
No place here.
But sometimes there are individuals who do not understand that and who think that people who hold different political views or who don't hold their political views deserve less. And we see this sometimes and we've seen sometimes issues of uh violence here and there. So those are the issues but and but I must say that I I'm still convinced that we're doing extremely well as a country and um even internationally it's recognised as such regarding s rights and civilian political rights. Uh in in uh because one uh just in uh we're in June we're in July. Recently uh the United Nations Council on Human of Human Rights held a session and the High Commissioner for Human Rights called Mister Foka Turk issued a statement and I think listeners should look for it online uh on the status of human rights in the world. It was a very long statement where he took he really took a lot of trouble to describe the the human rights situation in the world and he particularly uh drew attention to the places in the world where there are human rights that are disturbing in Africa and beyond and Zimbabwe is not among those countries and it's not surprising. I'm I wasn't surprised because I said yes because my sense is that we are doing well. What we need to do is not it's not good enough to just do well. We need to do very well.
Yeah.
We need to remove those um you know now th- tho tho those those issues that are standing in the way of our the the fly in the ointment regarding the way that we take politics that we allow politics to uh to get in the way of uh us respecting each other's dignity and equality yet we are so much better off by remembering that we're just one country and we're all Zimbabweans and those who visit us are also just human beings and so um you know there is no need whatsoever. There's a there's a place for everyone under the sun. We must not um hate people uh or despise people who have different views. We must respect their right to think the way they think. We must even defend their right to say what they say that we do not agree with and we disagree agreeably. This is what we need to keep doing.
Okay. Right, um I'd I'd asked uh on on the right to dignity um of arrested persons. I know you talked about that. Uh you've also noted our place for the work that they are doing in ensuring that you know they use their resources to help people to get to court within um forty eight hours as stipulated by our constitution. I want to 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 ask you again on the issue on the state of our of our prisons. There have been issues around that, that our prisons are overcrowded and you know they're not the the they're 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 not the ideal place you think of when you're thinking about the right to dignity. What has been your assessment of that as a commission?
As a commission, I'm happy to say that uh the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission is um commands the Zimbabwe prisons and correctional services for doing a fantastic job regarding respecting the dignity of the people that are under their care, their equality and their freedom, oh their freedom to such an extent that uh prison of course allows them to be.
Yeah. Given discrepancies.
Yeah yeah, because uh being in prison uh is what the is is what must be the punishment. You know be just being in there physically. The experience of living there should not be a punishment. So what has been happening is that um the Zimbabwe prisons and correctional services has uh uh cause we we inspect them in terms of the constitution, in terms of section two hundred and forty three uh subsection one in our mandate, part of our mandate is to monitor and inspect places of detention where human beings are held. And prisons are one area we do a lot. So we are an evidence-based institution, we are independent and therefore we are not afraid of anyone, we don't favour anyone. We just go and we find out what it is that the what 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 is the what are the facts and what are the issues and then we make recommendations in terms of the law. And um in terms of prisons, we we go to prisons a lot. We inspect uh we've I think we've practically inspected every prison in Zimbabwe and we but we keep going on over and over again. We find that um there are there are problems with our prisons and one of them, a key one, the major one, is crowding. Our prisons are crowded. Um ha I'm not very good with figures but I yeah I don't want to hazard I'll say the wrong figures.
Mm-hmm.
But our prisons at any one time have I think more than thousands of people above what they should carry. And this is because our prisons in Zimbabwe were largely built before independence, before nineteen eighty when the population of Zimbabwe was clearly much less. And there have been few, very few prisons that have been built uh after independence and so the the crowding is 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 inevitable. And then the other problems that they have is also the structures, the the infrastructure. Uh cause pr- our prisons are not getting sufficient money to run them. They are not getting as much as they need. And so that's a problem because issues like maintenance and uh is is difficult. But despite that Brian, I it's it's uh you should actually visit there. I think we should one day organise a a prison visit because the
Definitely.
Because I think the the prisons and correctional services also welcome, they are very open. It's something that has not been there all the time. They've done very well. I remember when I had the privilege to be Deputy Minister for Justice and Legal Affairs during the inclusive government in two thousand and nine. It was a totally different uh and really dark and painful time to be uh especially in prison. Um there was um malnutrition. You know there was a time when at that time prisoners were dying at the rate in two thousand and nine somewhere about nine prisoners per day due to malnutrition. The records are there. It was that time when also there was a lot of economic suffering outside, it was worse in prisons. And there was hardly you know a food and and then enough food, we won't even talk about that, clothing and things like that. It's an extremely radically different prisons uh cause they do get support from the government and they keep uh also asking for and we we also support them to do that. And they've also done very important things and I'm I'm happy to see suggestions that were totally unknown or that will be known when I was deputy minister to say look, there isn't sufficient money to buy um you know like even blankets or clothing. So why don't you let why don't we um uh introduce a system similar to schools and school uniform? That there is a set one that's known so that those uh families and individuals who are able to go and buy that regulation at they buy it themselves and the money that's left is left to buy uh for those. And you know those things were it was such a closed system but the 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 you know the leadership of prison now they're doing a phenomenal job, it's an open state, you know people also I think you've seen people with khaki if you believe that is if you interact with with the bullet hole.
Yeah yeah yeah, I I've been to a few prisons as well.
They're different sometimes um you know like uh clothes that are prison regulation. Uh those things were not there at all. And in terms of transport, they are now able to transport people to prison uh to prison and back, it wasn't there. And what and one of the things that's really heartwarming is the human end of it. That um they've actually opened um introduced family week, would you believe it? Family week where people who are in custody uh when they designate the family week they can their families and friends can go to prison, spend the whole day with them. If they want to come every day, they can do so, children et cetera et cetera. And that has I mean that is really phenomenal. And I understand that our prisons are also um like a model. Uh they inspire a lot of other prisons and correctional services around the country. I I I was I was really surprised when I saw recently something on the social media that said that uh Chikurub is the worst prison in the world or in Africa. I'm thinking wow, that's I can tell you as the chairperson of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission, that is not the case. There are things can be better but and the cleanliness, my goodness, it's uh they they are they do a fantastic job of uh cleaning prisons. I remember going to mm I visited Mutari prisons like an impromptu visit and where I was allowed to get in there previously. I don't think you could do that. And I was amazed by the cleanliness uh that the floors spotless. I mean they 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 really clean them out and the inmates also uh participate. So they are um and they are actually now eating meat, would you believe it? There I mean I'm I know it shouldn't be shocking but
Hmm.
it was not available at some point.
J- jangas naga naaro.
And and even for children, women who have babies in prisons, they now always in a sanitary way for women et cetera in prisons. It wasn't really there so there's a lot to be done. But there's need to support um wh- what the problem is now regarding medical drugs, particularly for psychiatric patients. There there's a shortage and there are issues, issues like that need to be done. And I see prisons are also doing a lot of work in in uh becoming changing to correctional services because that's uh and it's good to see the government investing in workshops and farms because they and growing some of their food and teaching skills and uh it's 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 really uh i- it it's really very very encouraging and we need to see that improve keeping on improving and we want they must still be given, we lobby they must be given more money uh so that the you know uh plumbing and um water supplies et cetera are always on point.
Right, um it is a show the platform, I'm your host Brian Marvin K S Toli and tonight I am joined um in the studio by the chairperson of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission um honoree honorable Fungai Jesima Jome. Uh she's here with us and we are talking about uh the state of human rights in the country. And then I just want us to move away fro from this a bit and talk about our local authorities. Recently uh you submitted a petition pertaining the issue of 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 noise pollution um as a commission and you personally actually handed it over to to the mayor advocate Jacob Mafume. Would you like this to tell us um in a in in a in in brief about that petition? What was it about and um did you also feel that the petition would be responded to, it would get the attention that it deserves?
Thank you Brian, I like this issue. You know when you hold public office sometimes people forget that you are a human being by yourself. So what happened at uh and I'm really excited to be able to get a chance. The petition that I delivered to His Worship the Mayor of Harare
Hmm.
was not from the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission.
Oh really? It was from you?
It was from 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 it was from me and from from my community and myself. I live in a place near Sherwood Golf Club, I've been neighbouring there and for the last ten years or so fifteen, ten I think we've been assaulted you know and our peace, our right to security of the person and you know it's been assaulted because of noise pollution and to a to a healthy environment. So uh I happen to be the chairperson of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission but I'm a I'm an individual and a and a human being
Hmm.
and a resident of Harare and a citizen of Zimbabwe before I am that and I know my rights. So that's why I I I defend and protect everybody's health and mine as well. I will not leave mine out. So the community that I live in um uh yeah, wh- what I did was to deliver the petition because I have time for that, I I will do that. And and uh and uh so it was a petition by our residents and of course I actively uh participated in the in the compilation of the petition so that we uh let um Harare City Council know that look you know you've pro brought a problem to us. Cause in that particular case, it is Harare City Council that uh brought that noise maker. It's a tenant of the city, the club I was at Sherwood Golf Club belongs to Harare City Council and I I cannot for the life of me and my fellow uh my neighbours we do not understand how the council can cause a golf club is a golf club can release to such noise. So we have rights as well, I have rights as an individual. Uh so it was not yeah
From the commission?
It was not from the commission.
Hmm.
I I I am a chair of the commission but I am a human being and I am a resident.
Right.
So uh yeah and I will also fight for my rights as I fight for the rights of others and the residents in my neighbourhood also um you know also also want that. So we we have a right to a peaceful environment uh and that is what we yeah that is what we are looking for.
And and what was the response um from from the council? Have you seen any action, where are we with the issue or the issue?
Not at all, I'm afraid, not yet. I I I am actually I think the His Worship the Mayor must have written a reply to say yes, you saw your petition. Uh not yet but I am told I discussed with him informally at the Heroes Eka and asked him about it. He said it's been referred to a some committee and he has some uh also su- uh summoned um what are they called uh sports clubs in Harare. But I really don't think that the city of Harare is serious about this. Because particularly we cause Ed Sherwood Golf Club, it is them that are causing this to us. It's that they should just cancel the lease. It's so very clear uh we don't know why they are they are doing that but so but then the other noise venues around but it's it's also it's a human rights issue, it's an administrative justice issue. Uh so we're looking forward because our property values have been trashed because of this. Um you know every weekend uh from Friday, you know it it operates like to Sunday. It operates like a nightclub. It actually starts the 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 live music in open air in a small neighbourhood. Um it's it's extremely loud and they start at the times that nightclubs usually start eight, imagine eight P M.
Hmm.
You start getting thumping bass in your house and you're trying to sleep up to and they close at three A M. There are people who are in that neighbourhood, some of them are elderly, some of them are ill, some of them are students trying to study. And it's brought with it also um this trade that has s- sex trade there. You know it's turned been turned into a red light district. Uh there is also drug peddling et cetera and it's it's just not alright. Yeah and uh so it's 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 a governance issue and the city has to fix this. And and there are also probably I attended a meeting in Ward seventeen uh over the weekend organised by the council. There are a lot of people also uh all across Ward seventeen, the the graveyard sports clubs and sort of other places in private joints where there's noise proliferation and some of it is even churches. And for some reason the city is not it's it's not using the power that it has to fix this. But Ed Sherwood Golf Club cause every uh can I name the musicians who are there every weekend?
Yeah, you can, you can.
Some of them used to be my favourite musicians, now I do not want to hear them. So Mamtukuzi does not leave Sherwood Golf Club, she's always there. I mean it's like it's really not right. Uh and Sulu uh is Sulu Manichimbeto and also I think the Muzi tribe and so on, goodness. You know I I I I have no there yeah they are there. It's like there are no other places to you know to play but they should be they are not considered because I know they are in the musical business but it's a s- it's a neighbourhood, it's not meant for that. If they want to do that there they must build a whole soundproof it and do whatever they want to do there.
Right.
It it's it's really selfish.
Now now going back to 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 the 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 process you've taken, if you've taken the legal process you have um in fact you've taken something that is within your rights as 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 a as a citizen as you've mentioned, coming up with a petition, taking it there and now you're saying that you're not seeing much action. What what the how how does this play out? Wha what does this mean to you um when when you think about the 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 responsiveness of our local authority or rather of those that are in that are in power? Um is is this a show of 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 no political will in terms of rectifying a challenge like this? Cause it seems like a very simple challenge but it's not being taken seriously as you have pointed out. Wha wha what does this mean?
Yeah, this means that we are definitely behind as a nation regarding the level of um of responsiveness as you said. Um it's actually unconstitutional in a way because chapter I love our constitution. Chapter nine pertains to the principles of public administration and leadership. And um there must be responsiveness and being development and people oriented. And it's uh in section hundred ninety four says that people's needs must be responded to within a reasonable time, right?
Right.
And uh I mean all that uh they should uh they should be they should be an awareness that people are in offices to serve the people, to serve the people rather than rule them. And with the council it's worse because our relationship as citizens uh with the council is both political but also commercial. We actually pay money, we pay money to the council, to the city for our services. And so even that, we pay rates for properties
Yeah.
and uh they don't they're not really respected. I don't know what their problem is, they should act faster, it's 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 really not right. It's it's not uh um they they should learn to to yeah to to respect and serve the people. And we are the people, we pay rates to the city. We can't lift our houses and take them somewhere else. And we pay uh rates that are suburb like you know like uh suburb rates which are higher. So I I we don't know why we pay for them when it's as if we're living at in you know like it should have been somewhere, I don't know where.
Hmm.
Yeah.
It's it's you know it's it's um it 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 boggles the mind to think of what could be going on in some of these identity problems. If you complain about this um in in Sherwood, imagine eh kumwe jakamirase. Um so that's something that will also um take up with with the council and also give the mayor an opportunity to to respond to the issue and just also give an update um as to where they are um on this. But another issue that I want us to tackle clearly now is not enough to have a conversation with the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission chairperson um advocate uh Fungai Jesima Jome. Um I just wanna ask about the issue of statelessness. Um this is an issue that uh the world over is is topical, people are grappling with this and a report that I came across indicated that uh close to thirty thousand people living within Zimbabwe are also stateless. They lack the basic documentation um that would grant them citizenship. Is there anything that you're doing as a commission to try and ensure that we are able to eradicate challenge of statelessness um in the country and also ensure that those that are born maybe of Zimbabwean parents also have access to documentation that they need?
Thank you Brian. Um what I will say is that uh I've got some good news and the good news is that it's uh the the figure that is given of three hundred thousand uh of people who are at risk of statelessness is not actually strictly correct. Because a person is stateless if there is no country that considers them as
As their citizen.
their as their citizen. So we we actually don't have such a problem. There are people maybe here and there who could be at risk of being stateless. I I know the community that we've come across in the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission on the border with uh Mozambique uh pertaining to issues that you raised, uh birth certificates and so on. Cause there's a I I wish I could remember the name of the community but the right at the border where um families live this way, one some on the side of the border, some on the other side. A baby's born on the Zimbabwean side, the Mozambican authorities don't really consider them as Zaba- Zambian but their parent.
As Mozambian, yeah.
Uh so but there there are few, they're not like that but they can also get documents. So um I think we need to distinguish between the statelessness and lack or access to documentation exactly.
And access to documentation, yes.
Yeah, because that uh the access to documentation is a problem. And the good is thing is that uh the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission uh conducted a national inquiry into the difficulties that Zimbabweans face in acquiring uh state documents in twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. In this uh so it looked at uh birth certificates, death birth de- and death certificates, passports, um national I Ds. Uh uh and it looked at the difficult cases as to why is it that when our constitution provides that every citizen has a right to those documents? Uh I think you remember sometime back uh where there was a former registrar general, Meesaw Rest In Peace who was called uh Mister Tobaywamdeedy
Mm-hmm.
who was famous for saying that a passport for example is a privilege and those documents are privileges. But this constitution said no, those things are as of right. But there are still people who have difficulty getting those documents. And the commission conducted an inquiry and heard from people what their difficulties are and what they experienced and it made a lot of recommendations and some of which a lot of which have actually been adopted by the registrar, the general's department, the civil registry department. It hasn't been publicised but but these are areas where for example there are children whose parents have separated and maybe some across out in other countries across the border or some have died where the people would be made to bring witnesses of their births that don't exist or where they are home births and thi- things like that. So they've actually been the civil registry department has reduced some of those, removed some of those very strict conditions.
Legislations, okay.
Um and also even the cost. So these are issues um cause this um when we engage with the Melotra recently we were doing a an evaluation exercise because to see why there are some problems that are persisting. And some of the things people complained of was um because la- look I Ds and and birth certificates are given for free, right? But if you want it replaced, you have to pay money. Uh but passports are a very big problem. It's a good there's a big improvement of course, they're being processed fast but the cost
But they're still expensive.
the cost one hundred and seventy dollars. Uh that is the highest uh you know charged passport in the region. Countries like Zambia have around forty something dollars. And children also in some of the countries around us pay um less money for passports because children's passports are five years. But in Zimbabwe, a child's passport still costs one hundred and seventy United States dollars even if it lasts for only five years. And some countries have also smaller passports where you can pay for uh a shorter amount uh but they are still cheaper than ours. So so th- those are some of the issues and we are working on that. But also the issue of statelessness is important. Uh we are still encouraging Zimbabwe to ratify the Convention Against Statelessness. Um but um there were very good laws that in terms of our constitution where a person's child who is found in Zimbabwe uh who is not known of where they are, who's under the age of I think eight is presumed to be a Zimbabwean citizen and can be given citizenship. So we need to continue working on the risk of uh statelessness, especially where it occurs like those border areas especially. But but also a related problem which is not about statelessness is the issue of documents. Uh the the problem that we've seen as the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission also is that when people encounter difficulties at the civil registry department sometimes they encounter unhelpful officials who don't give them correct information, who tell them to go to some other district. Because you see is which is ironic because the central registry department has a computerized central database. But it still boggles the mind why they will tell somebody to go to another district to look for their records when they should be able to look it up and find the family tree. So these are the issues that we we should continue um advocating. Um but we need to and and thank you for doing this Brian because we need to keep sending awareness there that if a person encounters a problem at the civil registry department, they must see the supervisor and the supervisor because they just turn out go away and then these are the people that you see without birth certificates et cetera and children don't write their grade seven exams, they ta- get turned away from sport uh and so on and so on. And and these issues go into generations. Imagine if a mother doesn't have a birth certificate and then she has children and the children don't have birth it it birth certificates it gets more and more complicated. So we need to um we need to break the cycle so that people get these documents. And also the cost of passports is something that we are also working on as a as a commission. We hope to uh we are in the process of conducting and finishing our research so that we can continue to engage the civil registry department about that because people have a right to freedom of movement and they have a right to those documents.
Alright, uh now as we conclude the show, one question I want to ask. I remember recently the president talking about Zak uh saying I've given them teeth to bite when they got arresting powers. I also want to find out from you about the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission. You've talked about all these issues of violations and all that but what power does the commission have in terms of actually rectifying some of these challenges? Do you do you have um actual power? Can you arrest someone? Can you you know what what can what can you do as a commission?
Okay, we the commission are not a law enforcement agency. We are an independent institution meant to promote human rights and abuse of power. So the powers that we are given by the constitution relate to that. We have the powers to investigate. Uh we and in terms of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission Act, it's an offence for a person to refuse to hinder us in our investigations or to 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 conceal information or to to give us false information. So that is what we do, we go in and we investigate. And the other power that we have, if we don't get any cooperation uh we can summon uh we we can summon the the entity involved. I will give you examples at uh cause we were asked about Harare City Council.
Mm-hmm.
Just about two weeks ago, we summoned Harare City Council uh as well as we also summoned the airports company of Zimbabwe because we are conducting investigations in which both entities in their separate ways, in their different cases um were not cooperating with us, they were not responding to our letters or they were not responding in a manner that is meaningful. So we summoned them. And that summons um is a summons that has the force of law. Uh if they had not come, the law is very clear about what happens. It can result in very uncomfortable and inconvenient fe- uh experiences for the people concerned in terms of the law of course, but we are glad that they they each came separately. That's one that's one of the things that we can do. And then we also um and we issue recommendations uh when we investigate. We investigate very thoroughly and very fairly, we look at all signs and we're impartial and we're independent. Then we make findings and then we make uh of what it is that we found to be the facts. And then we make recommendations. Our recommendations I expect we expect them to be fulfilled uh because they have the force of law but not the force of a court order. Uh so in terms of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission Act, if recommendations uh that we make and they are usually to administer responsible for uh for 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 um uh for 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 um administering an act what we do is that if they don't comply the act allows us to write a special report to the Minister of Justice for the Honorable Minister to uh to to inform the president that a particular individual or entity has not um has not respected or heeded the recommendations of uh of 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 the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission so that's what we can do but also in addition when we find because we are not the ones that are responsible for enforcing the law in our human rights working investigations if we come across human rights violations that constitute criminal offences we have the power in terms of section two hundred and forty three subsection one paragraph H to direct the commissioner general of the police to investigate such cases uh cr such criminal violations of human rights and freedoms and to report in to the commission uh on the results of such investigations so that is the power that we uh that that we have.
Alright, and how do people get in touch with uh the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission should they want to also give some complaints on on any human rights violation?
And yeah. Hmm. The commission can be found physically in Harare at one forty four Samura Marshall Avenue or one hundred uh ni oh ninety ninety Sanoyo Avenue as well as in Blawayo at forty six Park Road in Surbabs that is just next to the Blawayo Poli in Umashingo where found at uh Inhale Street uh or Shubaima Wafa Street in uh Mash in Motari where at five Acadia Road in Morning Side in Wangi we are at Lubancho House uh in number one Polery in uh the Mashonale East you can find us at the Chinese complex uh those are where our offices are but you can also find us online uh we have an X handle you just search at uh Z three at 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 Z Z Z H R C um then we also have a Facebook page a LinkedIn account uh that you can uh search us there on and we are also we also have uh hotlines that are WhatsApp um WhatsApp uh lines that you can send us messages to I hope I um can have time to to s give those numbers that are are like um zero seven seven one eight three eight six five six zero seven seven one eight three eight six five six we are unfortunately not yet in Mashonale East Central uh and Midlands and uh Tabelin South where we should have rolled out to at least two of these provinces last year and two more but we are still we are looking we are waiting for the Minister of Finance to allocate us our budget so that we can be uh that we can be everywhere oh by the way we can also take cases to court uh for the courts to issue orders
Okay.
in terms of our acts.
At these individual cases?
Yes, we 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 can take what are called stated cases for the courts to pronounce what the position is regarding the law and assist uh people but we we are developing our capacity to be able to go to court but those are some of the things that we can do theoretically because we don't have the teeth that you look for because we are a civil institution and it is expected that in a culture where there's constitutionalism and democracy there's respect for the constitution and the rule of law and people must must value human rights so this is where we need to 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 get to.
Right, it's important that we value human rights and um we also make sure that we are bold that people's human rights as well and um also are responsible um in terms of our own rights unfortunately all the time that we had for the platform I've been joining the studio by the Chairperson of the Zimbabwe Human Rights Commission Chairperson Advocate Jes Fungai Jesima Jomi uh thank you so much advocate for coming I I look forward to further conversations.
Thank you very much Brian it was such a pleasure and I look forward to listeners getting in touch with us and telling others about reporting to the commission if you have uh a public official is a bu is not served you when you've gone there and has not given you reasons or your rights have been violated but oh please respect also the rights of others it's not only the government that has a duty to respect rights we must also fulfil prom protect and promote each other's rights.
For now.